Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Special Call Meeting. I'd like to welcome all the board members and all that are in attendance to our meeting We're going to get started by asking for a motion for the approval of the agenda. Is it anything you want to take off or add to this agenda? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To approve.
It's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All that disapprove, say nay. Can also get a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Special Call Board Meeting on June the 19th, 2009, and July the 15th, 2009.
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our June and July meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And by a like sign, nay. The next thing on our agenda is the review of possible search firms. And I know each board member, we'd like to thank Ms. Baker for getting that information out to us so we'd get a chance to review it prior to our meeting. And we're now open for discussion. Ms. Baker, is there anything you'd like to say prior to us getting into this discussion?
I just wanted to point out, you'll find this table on your, with your packet as well. I prepared this as a quicker summary of the information that's in your booklet, just to try to assist you as best I could. And I, as you all know, I sent out an email to 16 different firms, and I requested that each of them provide me certain information. I had responses from eight of the 16 firms. Two of the 16 firms actually responded that they were not able to respond at this time. So I thought that was a good return in such a short timeframe. And the packet, I prepared a summary of their responses to the questions I had posed to them in the email, and I also have included the actual email responses that they sent me for your review. As well, there was one, in addition to TSBA had already provided you their standard packet that has their information in it at the last meeting. Another company, and I laid that packet on your desk as well, McPherson, they had, McPherson and Jacobson, they sent me in the mail that packet. And I had extended that opportunity to all the companies at the end of my email to them. I said, if you want to forward any additional information, please do so with 10 copies so that I could provide each board member with a copy. And they're the only company that did respond to that additional packet. So I will take any questions, if you give me direction as to how, whether you want me to go through each individual company, or just respond to questions on an individual basis.
Ms. Phillips.
I first, I just want to take a moment and express gratitude to Mr. Campbell for taking a moment. He also summarized some things and sent it to us, and I thought that was very nice. And thank you for doing that, Mr. Campbell.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Or how would you like to proceed with this? I know there's got to be some questions that board members have, or any discussion you'd like to have, and maybe from the discussion, you'll have some questions for her. Because we do have to make this determination.
I think that, first of all, for anybody from any of these companies, we appreciate their taking the time and interest to apply help with this search. That being said, I think that one of the, one of the statements that another board member made earlier was that they thought it would be a good idea for us to have a company that had, you know, some full-time staff, and this is what they, they did. And I think that's, that's a good idea, to have a company that has a pretty good, you know, somewhat long track record. We could perhaps use that as, as a criteria to maybe cut back on some of these. There may be one that hasn't, that doesn't look like they've done search for school board superintendents. They might do a good job, but we just need to come up with some criteria that'll help us X some of these people off. So that would be just a couple of comments that I had that we could look at.
Dr. Buttrum?
Ms. White, I wanted to comment on the, the range of the expenses in, from these firms, all the way from $5,000 to, up to $20,000 plus.
$28,000.
And then expenses, I really don't understand how there can be that much diversity in one, one search, but it looks like they've, they've put it in here. And I would say that we really consider the price. And I, it looks like TSBA is the cheapest firm that has offered their services. And because we are members of TSBA, we attend their conference every year, I would, I would really hope that, that this board, if we're going to use a firm, that we would use our state association. It looks like they have plenty of experience. Their Plan One is, is very reasonable, comparatively speaking. So if we're going to spend money, I think $5,000 should be about all we should, should spend. And I think, you know, they'll, they'll do a good job for us. So I was impressed with some of the other credentials of, of these companies. But again, the price is just too high for me.
Ms. White?
I'm Mr. Campbell.
I, I looked through all of these, and basically, from what I read, all of them offer basically the same thing. Some are just more expensive to start with than some ad expenses, and first one thing than another. I would like, can I make a motion?
Is there any more discussion? Well, I need to, you can always make a motion, but there's quite a bit of discussion. We're going through the discussion phase, and once we sell the discussion phase, then we definitely need to jump right into the motion.
From looking at these, I think that, that a TSBA Plan Two, the $8,500 Plan, is by far, there is more in it, and there is more communication, there is more involvement of not only the school board, but also people within the community, different aspects of that in their Plan Two as compared to Plan One. And as I looked at it, their Plan Two, at $8,500, gives us basically the same thing that everybody else has given, even those that are ranging up to the $28,000-plus category.
TSBA was one of the two that I had narrowed my study to. The one question I'd want to ask of TSBA is, is it possible for them to speed up the timeline? Because they have one of the longer timeframes for getting a director. And I know that's something we'll discuss as far as, you know, what will the timeframe be, but I would like to see that be less than six months, if at all possible.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm thinking when Dr. White was here, that's one of the aspects he touched on, that it is truly up to this board. That's just what they have used, and just a pattern they have set. But it's up to the board. If you want to shorten it, a month or whatever, that's something when we get into the criteria of how we want to do it. And when we pick a consultant and decide on that tonight, that's one of the things we do need to bring up, is ways to shorten it. And it may be that after we talk to our consultant, we may run into a problem, but we're, we're going to all talk about it. So I thank you for your comments on that. Was it, I'll start on this end and come around, and that way I can get everybody, not miss anybody. Dr. Buttrum, was there anything else you want to ask or say before?
No, thank you.
Ms. Duggan? Dr. Andrews?
One concern I have about using TSBA would be that I'd like for us to find a firm, and you know, one of the, one of the firms that was making an application kind of referred to this. I want us to find somebody who is going to be very aggressive about looking for a good director. It might even be a director who's in another school system, who might not be actively looking for a new job. One thing that I worry about, and maybe I don't need to worry about this, but one of the things that I worry about with TSBA is that most of the school systems are members of TSBA, and how's it going to look if they go and poach somebody that, you know, is, is a member, they're a member of that organization? I think that we need to think about perhaps having a firm that, that won't have that consideration. Maybe that's overblown, I, I don't know, but I've, I've heard, I've heard of someone from another system having a concern about that, and that was why that system did not choose to go with TSBA. I, I think they're good people. The other thing is, they're, they're talking about just, just looking in Tennessee. And I, I think that there may be some people in neighboring states that would be interested in, in being a director here. I, I don't want us to miss out on some people who may be wanting to move back to middle Tennessee, or, you know, they may have other reasons to want to move here, not, not just for, you know, a good job with our system. So I do have that concern about TSBA. I also feel that, you know, we're talking about hiring the most important, this is, this is one of the most important jobs that we do. We hire the director of schools. It's, it's extremely important. It hopefully will help set the tone for what happens with our school system for, for years to come. We were fortunate to have a director for 12 years. So I, I feel that this, this is one place where saving $10,000 may not be the best idea. I, I like, you know, I've got my own, you know, we, we run our own small business, and there are times that we've decided, you know, we're not going to pay $8 an hour for this position, we're going to pay 14, because in the long run, we're going to get a lot more work out of that person. Well, if, if, if we pick the cheapest way to get the, our most important, our only employee, it might not, this may not be the time to, to save what's a small part of our budget. That, that, that's sort of just a comment, and I appreciate what everybody else has said, and I see their, I see the point of looking to, to get something that's inexpensive and, and that, you know, we, we're a member of.
Let me ask a favor. As you make your comments, if you would, please get as close as you can to speaking to the microphone so they can pick up, they're having a little trouble picking up what we're saying. So we're just asking everybody, when you make the comment, make it into the mic, or pull it up a little closer to where you are. I have a question before we go back, we need to back up one. Ms. Baker, when you sent this out, I'm thinking that this was one of the things that was mentioned at our last meeting about a regional search, was, and I can't, I dare not go back and read the letter, it was excellent. But this was something that we sent out asking, was it not?
I asked if they did a, said that we were currently interested in a regional search, but I also wanted to know if they had done national searches, and if they had done searches in Tennessee. So I asked them to specifically tell me the parameters of their searches that they have experienced doing. And you'll see some, there are a couple of companies that, none of their references were from Tennessee. They, they did not show or clearly state that they had ever conducted a search in Tennessee. No one came out and said, no, we've never conducted a search in Tennessee. But you'll see, there are a couple of companies that don't make any reference to having ever done a search in Tennessee. But, and they, they all did indicate that they would tailor the search however the board wished, as far as state, region, national. They, they could tailor it to what the board's desire was, as far as the breadth of the search across the United States. And I think that comes into play, it appeared, with what publications they use to publish the advertisements in, and how broadly they throw their net to recruit people.
I need to back up one to Ms. Duggan, and then Mr. Hopper.
Just as a point of clarification, TSBA does do searches at the southern regional states, and they will do a national search. Plus, all their stuff does go on the, their website, so that you can do electronically, pull it up. And I'm in agreement that we don't want to go with a company just because they are the least expensive. We want to make sure that we are able to tap into every resource possible out there for our search. I know I spoke with some board members on the Metro Board in Nashville, and they were extremely pleased with Hazard, Young, and Associates. I know they, they can be quite expensive, I'm not for sure just how much Metro ended up spending, but I also understand they're extremely pleased with their new director. So we, you know, we don't want to narrow our focus and just look only at the price. I don't think that's what we're doing, but it's obviously something we do need to consider.
Mr. Hopper?
I laid a sheet on your table there, at the request of the board at the last meeting. I had a, I called and had a conversation with a HR specialist that's employed one, by one of the major manufacturing companies in our area that frequently employs search firms to locate executive position candidates. And I've summarized that conversation, some of that's duplication of Kelly's good work, and, but just, these are just random comments. I think one of the key things that I got from talking with him was that all firms are not created equal, and that he basically said, we're going to get what we pay for. And I, I guess, really as far as TSBA is concerned, I, I share the comment, or the concern with Dr. Andrews that TS, let's say there's a good director at Oak Ridge that we want to hire, and Oak Ridge School System is a member of TSBA, and we're a member of TSBA. And now, how is TSBA going to go to Oak Ridge School System and say, hey, I want to recruit your director away, and, and have him come to Murfreesboro? And I just, I, I just have a little bit of concern that if, whether they can, if, if they're a good director, their system's going to be happy with them where they are, and they're sure not going to want to lose them, in my opinion. I, I did not understand from TSBA also, who does the searches? I did not feel like that, I, I, I didn't, well, I don't think we got that, they didn't respond to, they say who does, who is the search team at TSBA?
They didn't list specific names. They indicated there is a committee within TSBA, so it sounded as though it appears to be a group effort. They, they reference, I believe you'll see at some point, they reference a committee that they established at TSBA to review the applications. But they didn't give a name of one person.
I, I didn't get a, a good feeling about the other night when I asked if they would do more than just advertise this position to, as far as if they would actually recruit and call prospects and that type thing. I did like the price, they're cheap.
Unless you go outside of Tennessee, in which case it's $20,000.
Yeah.
So the price jumps significantly if you step outside Tennessee's borders with TSBA?
That's what I understand with Plan Three.
Are you finished, Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, do you have any comments?
Well, if you look at the experience taken from these suggestions from the human resource specialist, experience looks like a key factor in placement. And I really like McPherson, number four, McPherson and Jacobson. Their, their charges are mid-range, $11,500, and they have a very short timeframe. They can do this in two to three months, which is-
A minimum.
A minimum of two to three months. Right. So, but, you know, I think, I like their experience, I like their cost. I too share the concerns about the vested interest of TSBA. Do not misunderstand me, TSBA is a fabulous organization, they do great work in Tennessee and with the schools. But as far as this aspect, I'm concerned about their vested interest in different school systems and, and maintaining goodwill. You know, they, they're going to want to maintain goodwill with the systems, and they're not going to want to have the bad, anything negative about, in, in their recruitment. So I'm a little leery about, you know, choosing TSBA for this particular effort. I really like McPherson and Jacobson because of their experience, and because of their timeline, because their cost is not outrageous, we're not getting into the $20,000s.
But no, no Tennessee schools.
Yeah.
No.
I have a question. Does TSBA, do they actually go recruit, or are we just asking them to advertise and do a search? Because I'm, what I'm hearing some board members say that would be negative toward TSBA is that they would go in and actually try to recruit someone away from their system. But I don't think that's the way they do a search. I think that they would go in, advertise the position, and it would actually be the people who work in the positions make the decision, I want to apply for this job. TSBA, I don't think would go in and say, you're a good director of schools, we want to take you from here and put you somewhere else.
That's right, they wouldn't. Yeah, exactly.
But they've been, alluded that that's how they do it, so that would be a negative.
No, no, no. It's a negative to me that they would not do that. Some of these firms will actually look and see where their strong superintendents, and see if they'll have an interest somewhere else.
But that's, may not be what we want the firm to do. We want to get candidates to look at the candidate's qualifications, and then we make the decision, not the firm. They're just going to find them for us.
Right. And that would be the case no matter what, Dr. Buttrum. But, you know, the best candidates to choose from would be the best for our system.
But I think TSBA has as much ability to find those candidates as someone in Oklahoma.
What if they don't recruit?
I think the, the point is, I mean, the, you know, the best people to hire, like, you know, in our practice, we've found out that some of our best employees, they already have jobs, and they're maybe not looking for a job, but somebody knows about them and knows that they're really good, and they kind of say, you know, you might be interested in this job. And, you know, why, why don't you apply? And, and our last couple of employees we've gotten that way, they weren't in the job market, but they are really good employees, and I hope we keep them for a long time. So some of these firms would actually do that. They're not going to pressure people to think about doing something they wouldn't, wouldn't want to do, but, you know, they, there, there are some that would consider sort of putting the bug in somebody's ear.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
Well, it seems like some, a lot of the discussion is geared toward Tennessee School Board Association. We're concerned about the area, but they indicate, if you look on number, on, in their proposal, number eight, E, says Southern Region State School Boards Association. So that means they're going to go out of the state of Tennessee, at least in the southern region. Ms. Baker, I don't know whether you can clarify this or not, but my impression, my thinking is that when you hire a firm, they put out information, and they're the ones responsible for the advertising and that sort of thing, to let people know that they're, their position open. Do they actually go out to other places and try to pull Ron Washington and recruit them if they think they can?
Yes. You'll see in some of these firms' proposals, they clearly stated that they will actively go out and recruit individuals that already have positions. I believe Hazard and Young indicated that, Ray and Associates made that statement, McPherson and Jacobson, and some of the others specifically state. And that was one of the questions that was posed to them, will you, you recruit? How do you get your, your people in? And that was in question 12.
Okay.
In my summary. If you look at how different companies responded in question 12, that should tell you how vigorous they are in recruiting. And there are some of them that clearly say, that's why we've got associates all across the nation, so we, we're involved in a lot of organizations to, so that we know who's the up-and-coming leaders in education, so that we can go and recruit them in for our clients. And you'll even notice some of these companies indicate and say point-blank that they work for you, the school board. They do not accept payments from candidates. They aren't a headhunter company where a person looking for a job pays them to help them find a job. You'll see that. Some of these companies clearly say that, that they work for the board and go out and recruit.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Baker, can you clarify for me the Tennessee School Boards Association's plans, where it says, it says Tennessee, Plan Two is $8,500, but Plan Three, which is outside of Tennessee, it, it says nationally, but regionally. Do you think it jumps if they just do regionally to $20,000?
I was not clear in reading their plan, what that, the jump is. If you look in their actual proposal on the last page, page six, it says that they will involve the National School Board Association. We would probably request clarification, what do you mean by involve? Does that just mean place advertisements on their website, or contact them to find out names of individuals that are interested in superintendent positions? It says they'll distribute brochures to all school board associations. So I assume that just means sending them out and contacting the other 50, the 50 school board associations across the nation, or more, I'm sure there's more in some states, and advertise in national publications and with national organizations. So that's the, the added, that's what expands it to a national search, is just the scope of the advertisement. So you may request more clarification from them as to why the, what all this extra includes in Plan Three.
I, I-
But even if, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I asked him that question the other night when he was here, and he, he danced around it. He didn't answer the question. They-
Well, it says here, even in, it says in Plan Two, it says Southern Region State School Board Association. Then it says for Plan Three, as above, the addition of the following. Now that's just, that's the way I'm reading it anyway.
If you'll notice those, it just says they'll distribute notifications and post on the websites and stuff.
So they're not really, not really recruiting and going out and-
Mr. Washington had a question.
Okay. This is your decision. My only, what I would like to know is, on page six of this booklet right here, TSBA booklet, they have a guarantee at the last point. Does any of the other firms offer that same service?
Yes. I think, but Hazard did, I saw that. Were there others?
Other firms offer, this, TSB offers a two-year guarantee. I believe Hazard had a one year or two. There's another firm that has a two-year guarantee. But other firms offer guarantees, they, they range from six months to two years. So you may want to focus on that. I know one of the firms specifically said, and this is something for you to keep in mind, that they would not recruit your new director for five years. They wouldn't, that, I mean, if these are firms that recruit, they will not- they will not recruit your director for five years. So, that's also something that you can negotiate in the contract when you hire the consulting firm as well. You might note that in the proposal sent by McPherson and Jacobson, one thing that I do like in this proposal, and I didn't even know that until I walked in here, is all these phone numbers they've given us and all these names and all these contact people. Someone who's willing to put a name and a phone number available for people to research and call. They feel fairly confident in their, in the success of their work. So, that's just something I'd like to point out.
But they do not list any references in the state of Tennessee?
No, they did not.
Any districts that they have worked for? Whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but it's the point.
Well, board members, I heard different challenges you're looking for and I don't think we're going to find them all in one branch on here. But I know some of the questions, and when TSBA was here, some questions I didn't know to ask until I got some of this information back. And it was really, he wanted to talk more, but he was just really here for an oversight to what, whether you take them or not, what you need to be looking for. And I won't say that not without looking at it. Every time I looked at it, I kept going back to, "Here's my fee and here's the expense." It frightened me a little bit when I kept saying "expense" because I can't imagine how many times we would need to consult with our consultant. And I wouldn't want to think I had to fly in here ten, or her, ten times. I know that would be a cumbersome burden to the board and we do want to keep in mind what we want to spend. Not to say, I look at people send in for contract work on different things we have here. I'll say the milk contract. We go with the cheapest bid and it seems to be good. So, cheap is not always bad, especially when you have a way of backing up and finding out how this organization has worked with us in the past. I had some concerns about all of them. And most of it was falling back in money. And I did have a concern with, I saw the packet that TSBA was offering and then I saw that big jump to twenty thousand. But then when I read in here, it kind of narrowed it down to where you're starting at eighty-five, but you could go up to twenty thousand dollars according to what you really wanted when you wanted to find somebody. So, I would think if you sit down with whoever we get and decide, "Here's where we are," because we're going to have to look at the money situation and say, "We want the most bang for our buck. We want the best fit for our system, but can we afford some of these organizations?" And today, we're going to have to make a choice. Dr. Buttram?
Can we make a motion?
Somebody, we can make a motion. Somebody asked me about a motion a little while ago.
Ms. Campbell?
I did. I'm sorry.
All righty. Did you still want your motion? I didn't want to ignore you.
Okay. I make a motion that we employ a Tennessee School Board Association to do a search and do it under their Plan Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Ms. Duggan?
Do we want to box ourselves in to a Plan Two search if we need to do the other? And the other question I would have is, has anyone spoken to any of the districts where TSBA has been used?
I have spoken with people in Rutherford County system.
I've heard mixed reviews, Ms. Duggan.
I've spoken with, I believe it was the Cannon County school board members and they seem to be happy.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions or?
What about the comment Ms. Duggan made about boxing ourselves in? Can we change the motion to?
It's his motion. If he would like to rescind it and change it not to box in at eighty-five hundred, you'd like to just take that out?
Yeah, I would be in agreement with that if there's more expense above the eighty-five hundred. But, yeah, I want to start with their Plan Two. And then if we need to add something in there to it, then we can do so if the board desires.
Yes?
There seems to be a little disagreement with what we actually want this firm to do. Just in hearing the conversation from the board tonight, that some actually want a firm who's going to go and actively recruit and then some who are, would be totally pleased and satisfied just for the information to be put out there. So, I don't know if that's something that needs to be discussed further before we actually vote or?
We're going to put this motion on hold just for stealing questions. Initially, when we were talking about this, and I need to go back to Ms. Baker because we put out with Ms. Baker what we wanted her to actively seek from the firms that we wanted to choose from. And I cannot remember and I probably need some help. We sent all this out to you. Didn't we actively bring it to that type of situation that we wanted them to actively go out? And did we?
Yes. Well, some of the criteria I was given is you wanted a firm that could do at least a southeastern regional search, potentially a national search. You wanted a firm that would go out and recruit people. I believe the comment was made a couple of times. You wanted someone that already had a job, not someone that needed a job. That was specifically in my notes. And you wanted to consider the price and you preferred someone closer to Tennessee as far as the travel and the expenses. You had mentioned that, to take that into consideration.
I think if we look at, on the Tennessee School Board, even under their Plan One, it says recruit candidates who meet the board's criteria. You look at that, that's number five under Plan One and Eight. And Plan Two says provide all services listed in Plan One. So, I'm assuming by that that they are going to recruit candidates who meet the criteria that we set forth for the director of schools. And I would assume that because Plan Two, and it says a southern region, that they would recruit within the southern region.
I think he said they just, you know, that they would advertise with that organization is what I recall.
It says, that's what it says. Recruit candidates who meet the board's criteria. And that may be something we need to ask him.
I did. I asked him the last time he was there.
Okay.
I have to apologize. I just don't remember. I just don't remember the whole conversation. And I'm pretty sure if you say you did, you did and it probably reflects in the minutes. I just don't remember all the questions that were posed to Dr. White.
If it's got it in the proposal here, I mean, I don't see how they could come back and say, "No, we're not going to recruit anyone for you," if they've written it here that they're going to recruit candidates. So, I would, it looks like they will recruit for us.
I think people have a different definitions of what recruiting means.
Excuse me, did you say you think that what? Dr. Andrews, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think people, I'm sorry. I think people have different ideas of what recruiting means, or actively recruiting or aggressively recruiting. And there's all different levels of recruiting. And I think organizations that build their reputations totally around finding good people for certain jobs are, I really strongly lean toward picking an organization like that. But that's their mission. That's what they do. That's what they're good at.
Do you see one you like that? I'm sorry.
Oh, do I see one I like? I see a few I like. I like the Hazard, Young, Ateya and Associates and have had a comment from someone that they thought they were a very strong firm. I think the ones that have done a lot of searches and, you know, the bigger organizations are probably going to have, you know, be set up better to do it. I lean away from the really small firms that haven't done it. I like the idea of being able to have an organization that has worked in Tennessee, but they wouldn't have to. And I sort of am attracted to the ones that have done one, done them for some larger school systems because I feel that the, you know, the larger school systems are going to be very professional about how they do a search. You would hope they would be. So, those are just some thoughts that I have.
All righty. Are there any more questions or comments before we get ready to take this vote? Now, I keep, let me say, as I keep listening to what we say we want, what we don't want, are you ready to take a vote on this tonight? It's like it's tossed in the air that I don't know if we really know what we're wanting after the search went out.
Sorry.
Are you ready to take a vote tonight to make this? This is the big decision for us in retaining a consulting firm. Because our next meeting is with this firm to go forward with part of the criteria that we're going to talk about tonight with them to help us out.
Well, I think that we need to make a decision. We need to move forward. We don't need, every week, every day, every month that we wait to make a decision means that it's going to be that much longer before we have our new director of schools in place. We may end up with an interim. So, I think we need to move forward. So far, I haven't heard that we're lacking much information. I think that we have some pretty good information. I don't know, Ms. Baker feels like we might need more or not.
I think you've been provided a lot of information. And especially if you went to their websites. I was hoping that the board members would review their websites. That's why I put that information in the packet for you because it gave you a better picture of each company. One thing I've been told as I've been calling and gathering information from different people that have been through searches is to help set your new director up for success. I had a number of board members that I contacted encourage me to share with you that you really should invest in the community, the meetings and bringing in information from your different stakeholders in your school system. That doing that on the front end would help, help set that person that's going to come up, come into the new position, set them up for success because the whole community feels they have played a role in the search. So, any company that indicated they did facilitate those type of meetings and go out and gather that information, I think, would be beneficial from what I've been told. Also, on the downside, one of the things I've discovered is it's the, cost-wise, expense is going to be there, the expenses, not the base fee, but the expenses of bringing in candidates, interviewing candidates and bringing in consultants multiple times. Most, I believe basically every company put the expense of advertisement back on you, the board. So, this is their fee, but it doesn't include the advertisement cost. You pay that cost in the printing of the brochures, the printing of the information. So, from what I've gathered, that is the downside from the search is that's where the expense is going to be much far exceed the fee they're charging you. And I think Mr. Anderson may speak to that from Williamson County's experience. But that is where you'll see the biggest cost. Now, I've also been told that one way to help cut that expense is to take advantage of technology, use webcast. I believe some companies are able to do some sort of meeting through satellite. So, there's different technology advantages you could use to help cut that expense. So, those are just some things I wanted to make sure that the board was thinking about in making this decision because as I've called different people, they, those are some of the things that kept coming up time after time when I've talked to people.
Question?
Mr. Campbell, the name is Duggan.
You said that our next meeting will be to meet with the firm that we think tonight we want to go with?
Yes.
Okay. So, whatever firm tonight we decide that we think we want to go with. And I emphasize the word "think" because I am assuming that if we meet with somebody from this firm and they don't meet the criteria that we want, we're not obligated at this point in time to use them afterwards. Am I correct? We are offering, I guess what I'm saying is, we're going to have the firm come in and tell us or answer our questions. And then at that point in time, if there are four board members that want to continue with the firm, then we do so. If not, then we start back as we are tonight, looking for another one.
Yes. I don't, unless you take a vote and authorize me to enter you into a contract with a firm, you will not be obligated to that firm until you've actually entered into a contract with them to provide the services.
I don't, my motion is not to enter into a contract. My motion is recommending TSBA and start with their Plan Two and see what else we have to do. And if we decide that we don't want TSBA, then we go somewhere else.
Ms. Duggan?
With the other firms that you have information from, they didn't really give us any idea of what other expenses might end up being. I realize it's going to be different with every system and they gave, some did give some, but maybe not as in-depth as I'm kind of thinking we now need.
Well, there was actually, and I'm sorry, I've read through so many of these, they begin to blur after a while. There was, one of the firms went to great lengths to give you estimates and detailed expenses. And I keep coming back to Hazard, Young, Ray and Associates and the Jacobson, that firm. They were the three that seemed to give the most detailed information.
They gave more information, yes.
It was Ray that gave the good explanation.
Okay.
My other question would be is, say if we bring in, say if we were to bring in McPherson or Hazard and Young, is there a, I can't remember, is there a fee for them just to come in and talk to us? I know they're going to have to travel here. So, is there a fee for them to come and give us more information? Maybe it's there and I just didn't see it.
I know that at least one company said they would come and meet with the board without any cost to provide more information.
I know TSBA does that and they've already done that.
It was one of these three that would do that as well.
Well, the motion's on the table and it needs a second. Mr. Campbell amended his and I think I got a second a few minutes ago. Ms. Ridley, please call the roll.
I have a clarification with you.
Okay.
Clarification is that you start with TSBA to bring a representative in, look at what they offer, starting with Plan B and see if they are the company that you do wish to hire. So, that's what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
And that was your agreement, Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Explain that motion one more time.
Okay. If I understood Mr. Campbell correctly, he said that they would bring a representative from TSBA to present to the board what they have to offer, starting with Plan B, and see if that meets what the board wants in the search. And if it did, then they would look at it.
Okay. This is not to hire them. This is for them to come back and talk to them.
Not to hire them, but just to meet with them and consult with them at their call.
Can we not, I wish we could add another firm to come at the same night so we wouldn't have to?
That's not the motion. I agree with you. No.
Ms. Phillips?
No.
Dr. Andrews?
No.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Can we make a motion that we have another firm come in the same night and save ourselves some time? Give ourselves somebody to compare to?
I want all this on the 11th. That's our next meeting.
That brings us back to where we are now. I mean, I thought we were wanting to narrow it down and-
That would narrow it down if we chose one other firm to compare.
But we don't, we have comparisons here. Let's bring them in and talk to them and move forward.
Well, that sounds like we've made a decision already to go with them.
We have not contracted with anyone. We just made a decision to bring them in and talk to them.
But if we bring them in and talk to them, why can't we talk to someone else at the same time?
Let me ask this question to the board. The motion has been passed that we're going to bring TSBA in. If you choose not to use- to bring TSBA in. If you choose not to use TSBA, that is the time to get with Mrs. Baker and get her to contact your next choice to bring them in. I don't know how we would manage to sit with two folks the same night in a big discussion. I just don't see it. Because then now you've got to sit and decide who is the second choice that you'd want to talk to. That's one you can, we can decide tonight, but don't bring them in the same night. You bring in TSBA because TSBA is the decision of who we're going to meet with first and run some of these questions by. Now, if you'd like, and I think we can make another motion, who your second choice will be, that if TSBA does not work out, then this is who you want to come for the second, who you want to get Ms. Baker to notify on the second choice. Now, would you like to make a motion to who your second choice will be if the first one you pick doesn't work out?
I have a question, Ms. Wade. If, if we do not choose TSBA, will we know that next week after we meet with them?
We should.
All right. Well, then, can we wait till then, and if we don't choose them, then let's, we could discuss that then, but why put the cart before the horse here if we, we don't know that yet?
Well, from the conversation, I have gathered that the bulk of you have somebody and that you want to really get to be your second, your second choice. It could take another two hours, another hour to decide on that second choice, and it's fresh tonight and we've asked all these questions about these folks. And I know there's somebody that you'd like to see as your second choice, and we wouldn't have to go through this again.
I just wanted to point out, in the correspondence that I sent to all of the firms, I did indicate that there was the possibility that the board would choose to do formal interviews of their final selected firms. So, they will not be, it won't be unusual for you to call in more than one firm to interview.
Comment?
Mr. Campbell.
The next meeting we have is at 4:00, right?
4:00.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't disagree with Ms. Phillips particularly. I don't see anything, my personal opinion, you know, it's kind of like interviewing teachers, you know, you don't interview just one, you go for more than one. And then if we had, if we've got two firms we want to look at, we let one come at 4:00, one come at 5:00, and go from there. That's my personal opinion.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Campbell.
Would you like that to come in the form of a motion? Now, I wouldn't want to interview all, how many do we have, eight?
No, I don't think-
Three.
I would think that we would narrow this down to at least, if you want to interview-
Three, no more than three.
-all these folks. Let's do this tonight, board, and decide who those folks are going to be that you want to meet with, and then we don't have to go through this next week and set another meeting. I know there's some motions that probably want to hit the floor. I've heard two, I've heard three. I need a motion for, if you'd like to interview two more beside TSBA, then get a motion, put it on the table, and then we'll go back and get who those two are going to be.
I, I, second.
Alrighty. The motion was we would interview possibly two more beside TSBA. Now that we've got that, Ms. Ridley, would you please call the roll on that?
Okay. Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Now, as we flow along, I know there are some motions for who the next will be. We'll have all this wrapped up and out of the way for next week so you know, the 11th, you know what your agenda's going to consist of.
Ms. Wade, before we consider someone, Ms. Baker, would we have to pay for someone to come in for this if we ask them? I don't want us to be responsible for flying someone in from-
Now, this is when they're trying to get the job.
So, we would not be responsible for paying their expenses to come here next week to-
No. And I will, I will confirm that with them before they are invited to come and be interviewed, and I will email the board and let you know if they have said, "No, we won't come without charging a certain fee." I'll let you know that.
Alrighty. Ms. Duggan?
And I'd like to recommend that we extend the invitation to McPherson and Jacobson and Howard and Young.
Hazard and Young?
Yes, I'm sorry. I knew that said Hazard. I'm sorry. If there is no fee for their coming in to share with us.
Is that your motion, ma'am?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any questions? Any discussion?
Who were the two? Hazard, Young, and-
McPherson.
McPherson. Are there any questions or, as well, second, Ms. Ridley, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews, I'm sorry. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you all so much. Mrs. Baker, those are the three that you would need to contact for.
Do we need to set as a board a time limit per company? I don't know whether an hour is too long or not, 45 minutes, 45 minutes?
Ms. Baker?
Mr. Anderson, in his dealings with the Williamson County's Board, they set two-hour increments for interviews. I don't know if you want to set that long or an hour, an hour and a half.
Was that before you had information on them, Mr. Anderson?
No, we had, just like you, we had narrowed it down just like this and ended up with three firms that we interviewed. We, we determined questions to ask, so we asked them all the same exact set of questions, and then, well, board members were allowed to ask other questions after we set the set questions. You could ask follow-up questions. That's why we made it two hours because you get in the first hour of just regular questioning, you may want to do some follow-ups.
Did you do it all on the same day?
Yeah.
Well, that seems a little long for three, six hours' worth of, of interviews here. I would think with the information we've already had compiled for us, we could look on the net at the three firms and then possibly shorten it to at least maximum an hour each.
Now, remember, Mr. Anderson gave us some good information. I know sometimes we, board members, can really get long-winded on questions that we want to know the answers to. I would think that if you maybe had three questions you wanted to ask, then that may narrow your time down, but if everybody here has five and some of them match it, it's going to take us a while. I need a motion for it. It would be nice to have that an hour and a half each, give you a break, maybe 10-minute break in between that hour and a half if you conclude it with whoever you want to interview first, second, third.
I have a motion. I make the motion that we allot each firm an hour and a half, and within that motion, I also recommend that the chairman of the board be the only person to ask the questions. Whatever questions we have, we submit to you in advance, and you're the talk person, and you're asking the questions so that we don't go back and forth, back and forth, and let it go with that, and we'll make notes on the questions that you ask and the answers that they give.
I, I'd like to be able to, if I may, I'd like to be able to ask some questions that may come out of what they're saying because, you know, I'm going to be learning things from them while they're talking, and, and we may have some questions that I couldn't, I wouldn't have thought of ahead of time.
Well, maybe, maybe I should say, we'll give a list of questions to the, to the chairman and let the chairman ask the questions initially, and any time that's left over, if we have time left over, we as board members want clarifications on some of those questions that then we can do that. Otherwise, I'm, I'm afraid we're going to get back and forth into a discussion, you know, well, I think this, and I think this, well, I want to, I think the firms, I think that you'll find, as, as a professionalism, I think most places like that, you're going to have one person asking the questions, and then after all that is said and done, then if there's somebody else that wants a clarification, then they can, we can make notes on those questions and go back. Mr. Anderson, is that-
Look, they'll want to make a presentation to you. That was part of the total package that they came in. They made presentations first, and then we asked set questions, and then there were follow-up questions.
Okay.
That's probably why it took longer than what you're talking about.
Okay.
Can we request that they not make presentations because we have most of their things here, and I don't want to hear all of this again. I don't want to hear how many schools they've, they've done or how, how many people they have on staff. If we have that information here, we don't need to hear that again.
You know, one thing you can-
Ms. Baker, then you do, Ms. Phillips.
I was just going to address the presentation question. If you want, if some of you, if you want to hear any presentation, you can always give them a time limit on how long they could do a presentation, 15 minutes, 30 minutes, 10 minutes. I mean, you can set the cap on how much of that hour and a half they can eat away for a presentation versus you strictly asking them questions. So, you can, you can design it how you would want the interview process to go.
15-minute presentation.
Ms. Phillips?
Well, I was just going to say, I do think it's important to let them speak for just a few minutes out of respect for them taking the time to come down here, but also, but you can learn a lot about people just listening to them. You can tell a lot about their dynamics, their priorities, and, and things that, the way, what, what they care about, and so I think it's important to listen to them for a while, even if it's 10 minutes, just to listen.
Any other questions or comments you'd like to make? Mr. Campbell, do you have another question you want to answer?
No, ma'am. I was just telling Mr. Walker what we were doing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Mr. Anderson. You all asked questions. Did you have 10 questions, five questions, or did you try to limit it so they have time to answer it, and did you send it to them prior to the meeting?
No, we didn't on that. It went, each board member would submit two questions, is the way we did it, of what they would like to have asked. And we were asking things like who's the main contact person for the firm because that's critical to your search, is who's the one actually going to be in contact with you, who's going to handle the brochures, who's going to, you know, what, what markets are you going to use and stuff like that. So, it's pretty much preset, simple questions, then based on their answers would be your follow-up. One of the things they're going to want to promote is their experience, and each one of the persons that they assign to this task is their experience is what they're really going to be pushing.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of any of the questions that you all asked that you could forward to, please? There's a motion on the floor for the time. Is there any more discussion about the time that you want to give them? 15 minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes?
I, I want to talk about the, them having some time because I want to get a feel from the person of, of what they're like and what their ability is. I, I mean, you know, I don't see them coming in here and speaking five minutes and then just start firing off with questions. I want to, I guess I'll partially evaluate the person by the, the quality of their presentation and information that, that they're sharing, but we-
Do you think 15 minutes is long enough for them to-
Well, if they got an hour and a half, surely if they had 30 minutes to tell us about what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, and then answer questions, that hour, there'll be plenty of time to answer questions from us about the firm, it would seem like to me.
That seems reasonable.
I'll ask Mr. Campbell if he wanted to rescind. He had a motion. 15 minutes, did you want yours to go?
Was that a motion?
Were you not afraid of that?
Yeah, I think I said 15.
He hasn't had a second yet, so he was clarified.
Okay, so it's not-
I'm, I'm okay with making that 30-minute presentation time, but no more so, and if they don't go that long, then we, you know, but that's what, yeah, that's fine. I think they need a time to, to brag on themselves.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ridley called the roll. Did you have the motion, Ms. Ridley?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Would you call the roll?
Would you mind just reading it off? Thank you.
Mr. Campbell recommends, has moved that the, each firm be given the opportunity to first make a 30-minute presentation, followed up by questions that the board will submit to Mrs. Wade in conjunction with the questions that Mr. Anderson will share with you, and then that, you will have, after that, those questions are presented to the candidates, then the leftover time would be taken up for follow-up questions.
Okay. I wasn't, I don't think we necessarily wanted to ask all of your questions and our questions, but maybe, could, could you maybe amend your motion to have Mrs. Wade go through the questions we give and the ones from him and maybe pick out some, or what would you think?
Well, I wasn't saying that Ms. Wade had to use everything Mr. Anderson said, or have, what, what that school system did.
Okay.
That's just, that's just a, a list, a guide to go by, and then each board member is going to submit at least two questions, and then Ms. Wade can take those questions and the, the things I think that Mr. Anderson, that Williamson County used, you can go through and determine what you need to do with that, and we'll all have the same thing.
Is that clarification not dangerous?
Thank you.
Okay, that clear?
Do you want the full list of questions submitted to the board so that they can review those before they leave?
I also want it forwarded to Mrs., Ms. Baker when they come in, please, ma'am. At, for, once you get them all compiled, if you will, forth to both of us, give us all a chance, and for the legal aspect of some of the things we may see, Ms. Baker definitely needs to see the questions, and I certainly appreciate the board. So far, we're moving right along. Can you, you had to come in before we take this vote?
Yes, I did. I would love to see each board member be able to ask at least one of his or her own questions because I think, without necessarily having to reply or, but I just think it's important for the public to see that everyone is playing a part in taking responsibility in the process.
I have no problem as a, a board chair. I don't want repetition to set in.
No, we would have to have that clarified.
Yeah. That's going to have to, now, that was, I can't tear up his motion. Now, he can go back and clean, if he wants to change his motion. If he does not, then it goes through. You have to vote it down and do, redo the motion.
Would you reread that?
I don't think that would-
No, ma'am, I'm not, I'm not changing my motion. I think the chair needs to be the one to ask the question.
Would you reread that, please, Ms. Ridley?
Okay. Mr. Campbell recommended that each firm be given the opportunity to make a 30-minute presentation, followed up by the chair of the board submitting the questions to those firms that have been submitted by the board members, and then Mr. Anderson will provide you some sample lists, and then following that question, those questions that are, that presented, then the board has a follow-up session to ask their own questions.
Did you say that, that we're going to submit those questions to the firm before they get here?
Oh, no, we didn't say that.
You just submit those, you're going to submit those to his wife.
No, the firm will not get a copy of the questions prior to the interview. Remember, if you vote it down, you have a chance to make another motion of what you'd like to do if you vote this one down. Wait a minute, question. Hold on. Ma'am?
It wasn't that important. I just think it's, it wasn't that important. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, see, I didn't make the motion. Let's clarify that. I didn't make this motion. In order for the motion, he has to rescind it. It's on the floor for a vote. Now, if he wants to go back and change it, rescind it, he can do that and change it to where the board members would ask their own, I, I don't have a problem per se with that, but it's his motion and he, it's got a second. He has to be the one to change it, and he has specified he did not want to at this time. So, the only other recourse is if the motion is voted down, then a new motion hits the floor, and you have to state your new motion, and we'll vote on that.
I'd like to just comment that I, I think that the, the last round of questions will give us an opportunity to, to be visibly involved.
Ms. Ridley, we read the vote.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you move on, Ms. Baker, when you speak to these individuals, if possible, unless this has to be a motion, it might be nice if the individuals that come would actually be the person who would be assigned as our contact.
Okay.
Or the main person that would be our main consultant. If that person could be the person they'd actually send to the meeting.
Okay.
I think that's a great, great request to make.
Thank you so much. If you have any other questions after the meeting about things you'd like to make sure that, for Ms. Baker sends out to the three that we're going to interview, please forward that question to Ms. Baker. that question to Ms. Baker. As a board member, please forward it to her. And, yes, ma'am?
And we did not say when we were going to have her, our questions. Because if we're going to be doing this next Tuesday...
On the 9th.
Or...
We're on the 11th. Ms. Baker, do you have a, like, here you say when you'd love to have the questions from us. When would you like to have them?
By Friday would be nice.
By Friday of this week, please have your questions.
You could just email us and say, send me your questions. That'd be great. They'll come right, and by whatever time, and that'd be nice.
And please, that's all to have questions. If you have more than one, feel free, more than two, go ahead and send them to her. Ms. Baker, it is not necessary that we choose. If you want to put the little numbers, numbers firm in the hat and pull it out at who we interview first, it's fine.
Okay.
It's fine with the board.
It may have to do with when they can be here, too.
Give them all the same time. No, I'm teasing. At least give them an hour ahead, so they'll all be here. All righty, if nothing more, we're down to a discussion of director of school search timeline.
Should we table that, Ms. Wade, since we really need to look at the, the firm first before we, I know if, had we picked a firm, we'd have seen what their timeline is, but could we wait till after we talk to the firm, since it may be dependent upon who we choose?
All righty, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Do we need to, to...
I think that...
Table that?
You can make a motion to table it until the next meeting, and it is down.
Can the...
I'll third it.
I'll second your motion if you make a motion.
Okay. I just thought the chair could say we're going to table this.
Either way, or the board member can make a motion to table it, either way.
You'd like to table that.
I make a motion that Ms. Wade say she'll just table it.
He's put it back.
I'll make a motion.
I do not have a problem, it looks like it's the consensus of the majority, like to table this until the next meeting, and it'll appear on the agenda at the next meeting. Number six, discussion of criteria to be used in selection of new director of schools.
I'd like to comment, sort of along the same lines. I think that the, if we, any of these firms, or the three firms, I think that part of what they talk about doing is helping you come up with your criteria. So I think that's when we should do it, is get them involved, and they can, they know how to help us do it.
I think this question got on the agenda. If there were some things that you had planned to say to them, or maybe ask for help on setting the criteria. I thought maybe, maybe one of your criterias would be this person had to live within this county, or, I don't know how, that's just an example. Maybe you wanted somebody with teaching experience. That's what I thought your criteria would be tonight on what you wanted to see. And before, I mean, if the board, the motion was, or you wanted to table it after you meet with the consulting firm, that's fine. But I don't want to take it off of here, and maybe some of the board members have some things they'd like to say, they'd like to see as part of the criteria. Definitely, we sit down with whoever we choose, they're going to help us. But, and I may ask, Mr. Anderson is into that right now. Did you all have this discussion before you met with your consulting firm?
One of the roles of the consultant is to decide what your criteria is, and if they're going to go out to the community, if that's the route you end up taking, they'll ask the community what it is, and then they'll come back to you to put together the profile to send out and to advertise. So you can do it now, or you can wait till the consultant is there. It's up to you.
Board members?
I may, we defer to the consultant.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, you have some discussion.
I just thought that maybe we could take five minutes and just throw out some things that we would like to say. I mean, it doesn't have to be in concrete, but at least we'd have an idea of what we're looking for, and what the criteria that might need to be done. You know, what we're, what we're looking for in a director of school.
You mean like Methodist, or Democrat, or Republican, or what do you?
We'll defer that part of it, okay? I think, never mind.
Well, since it's on the table for some discussion, you're welcome to ask questions right now before, because there is a motion and a second, and it's open for questions. If you have a question, and it's something you'd like to say.
Well, I think that the director of schools, we are a K-5, K-6 system. I think the director of schools should have a minimum of five years' experience teaching in a K-5 curriculum classroom. I think they should have some experience in administrative experiences. And that doesn't necessarily have to be a building-level administrator, but it could be an assistant superintendent, or anything administratively in a K-6 school system. Things that they, they need to know. Yeah, I think they need to live in Rutherford County.
And the reason why I made the discussion, it says just what it is. It is a discussion, and we'll leave it as a discussion. Seems like from what Mr. Anderson has shared with us, it is a good idea, once you choose your firm you want to use, that these are some things they need to sit down with us and become concrete ideas, and then they're going to take them out. But as a board, you do have this right to choose what part you'd like to see as the criteria for in the selection. So those were, thank you for what you've given us. Is there anybody else that you have some more?
I was just curious. You meant that they should move to Rutherford County if they're going to be our director? You think they should live there here now?
No, they should eventually be a resident, and we can give them a, I don't know whether we set a timeline for that or necessarily not, but I don't think they need to be the director of schools here and live in Cannon County, or Davidson County, or Shelby County, or, you know, I think they live, live in Rutherford County, eventually.
To me, I don't see that as being an issue. If somebody wants to live in Milton across the line, I think it's close enough, they can do a good job, but, you know.
Well, if they live in Milton, they're in Rutherford County.
Not necessarily.
It's not that far out in Milton.
Wilson County is, yeah.
I know.
Thanks, both of you. Dr. Buckham?
I'd like to suggest that we look for someone who has an advanced degree in administration and supervision, a preferred doctorate in education, preferred, but not required. But I certainly agree with Mr. Campbell on making sure we get someone that has experience with children in an elementary school, whether it's as a principal, or teacher, or supervisor. But I definitely think that the system needs someone, because we are special and we're K-6, that's a very good suggestion.
They need to have a background in preschool, you know? We have, we have a lot of the preschool students in our system.
Dr. Andrews?
I'd like us to have things that we'd like for candidates to have, but I don't want us to put ourselves in the position of not being able to accept a candidate who's outstanding in many ways, but may not meet one particular criteria. Like, I like your idea, it'd be great to have somebody with preschool experience, but that would really narrow our pool, since most of, most directors of schools haven't had the opportunity. So, but, but I, you know, I think that'd be something that would put a little plus by them. But, yeah, I'd like to not box ourselves in too much.
I understand. This is kind of like a wish list.
Right, exactly, yeah.
This is our time to get what we want, and what we think our school system needs. We're, I mean, we're not going out and just looking for any Tom, Dick, or Harry to come in and run our school system. We want somebody that's got the qualifications and the background, and I don't think that's unusual. David certainly wouldn't hire somebody that doesn't have the banking experience, I don't think, probably, depending, you know. I just think we need to set a criteria. We need to be pretty firm, and we need to say, this is what we want. And I guarantee you, they're out there.
Ms. Wade, I, Ms. Duggan, where you going? I was just going to say that in line with this, I've heard from lots of people in our community, I've heard from lots of teachers, and we are elected by those people. So we need to be cognizant of what their desires are also for the director of schools. And one thing I have heard is that they would really like someone who is a good communicator and can pull the community back together in the school system. And, you know, I know that that means we would have to be looking at someone who knows Murfreesboro City and knows Tennessee. I would like that to be one of our top priorities, is to look at someone who can come in and pick up some of the good things in our system, but then understand what our community needs and making, helping our system move forward and remaining a special school district.
Anyone else with any discussion about the criteria?
I liked how one of the firms talked about that they would ask us to, to choose what groups that the consultants would meet with, including perhaps central office administrators, teachers, building administrators, classified staff, students, community, and business leaders. So I think that, that we do need to come up with some good groups that, that they can help us get some feedback on, to get their input in the selection process. And I think that's, that's part of the way that you, you strengthen your system, too. So, you know, we'll be getting some ideas from some of those people, too.
Ms. Phillips?
I like, of course, I agree with everything just about that everyone's had to say. You know, I think there's so many, there's so many good elements to include in our criteria, and I don't want to box ourselves in by one candidate not having one, one thing. I, you know, I think that, and I know you all already think this probably, too, but our main job is, is, of course, to educate children. So I want somebody with the heart of an educator, and I want somebody who, who is completely dedicated to children, and to, and dedicated to, can be dedicated to our system, has a strong financial background, because we're dealing with the public's money, the public's trust, and also someone who can be a leader in the community. This is, in many ways, the face of Murfreesboro City Schools, and so whoever it is is going to be the face of Murfreesboro City Schools within our system. So this person's going to have to have so many qualities, and I know that this person is out there somewhere, but, and I'm sure we'll find them. But, you know, it's just, it's an exciting time, it's a challenging time, and I think it's so very important that we are careful, and cautious, and deliberate in choosing this person who's going to mean so much to so many children and so many families within our system. So, that's all I have to say.
Are there any, is there any more discussion?
Did Mr. Hopper rescind his motion? He did have a motion on the floor with a second, that they could defer item number six.
I think I'll withdraw that motion now.
It's a little late, isn't it, Mr. Hopper?
Well, it's always good to have, have discussion about some things. So when we get to the next meeting, we'll have an idea of where we need to start. And in the process, even when you send these questions to Mrs. Baker, have in mind, you may want to ask this firm something about who helps you get started with the, you may want to talk about salary, you may want to talk about their expenses. All the questions that you will have for this firm, and we want to be definitely, definitely when we decide to go with somebody, we need to be mindful of the public, our teachers, our staff. They're going to want to be a part of this process when they meet with them, and we need to be very aware of that, and be time-conscious about it. We've got a good system, we're going to keep it that way, and I just want to put that in mind when you send your questions. These are questions that we're really, whoever we pick, we have to hit the ground with us running to get this done. So maybe you want to ask them about their vision, their goals for this system. Have some good questions in mind. If everybody sends the same one, then that's good, and I know we're all on the same page. But please get those out this week to Ms. Baker, so we can get started. And Ms. Baker, as soon as you contact these folks, if you'll get back with us. Any more discussion, or anything anybody else needs to say, before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing that I would like for Ms. Baker to perhaps ask, is for the firms to maybe just give us some kind of a ballpark figure about what the expenses part might look like.
Is there anything else?
I would like to remind you all that their fees are negotiable. Now, these are, these are things they've thrown out, but we're not, we're not there, we're not there yet, so. There's hard times out there right now, though. They're hungry.
Mr. Anderson, is there anything else, that, anything you'd like to maybe say to us about you all in this process that may help us next meeting, that you've seen while you all are doing this?
I've been through four superintendent searches, three different firms. You're in for a long journey, and a lot of meetings. Good luck.
Thank you for that vote of confidence. If nothing more, we'll entertain, Dr. Buckham, would you like to give us a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.